Good evening, Bridgeport. Thanks for coming out tonight. This is Tuesday, February 25th, 7:42, and thank you for joining us today. We are to order. Please rise and pledge a flag. Thank you, everyone. Angela, roll call, please.
Laura Hauck.
Here.
Amy Hi.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Sabah Alzayed.
Here. Thank you.
Madam President, for the record, we were in executive session from approximately 7 o'clock to approximately 7:40 with regard to multiple real estate acquisitions and a personnel matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. All right, we can get to business here. First up for council considerations are January 28, 2025 meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Shank, a second from Ms. Gundrum. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next up on the agenda here for council considerations, authorization to formalize hiring Michael DiNezio effective January 28, 2025. Do you have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Hauck, a second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up for council consideration, we have authorization to hire Nancy Kion, known as the substitute crossing guard with oath, oh, sorry, Neon, with oath ceremony. And I believe is that Chief and the Mayor? Yep. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to hire Nancy Kion as a substitute crossing guard.
I'll second.
Motion from Mr. Heil, second from Mr. Shank. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And now we can hold the oath ceremony if you'd like.
Okay, so good evening. So we're happy to invite two more substitute crossing guards into the fold for Bridgeport Borough. The first is Nancy Kion, 75, of Upper Murray Township. She's a proud United States, Upper Murray Area High School graduate and a retired legal secretary, having worked in Northstown for many years. Nancy, would you be able to come up to the podium and meet the mayor for your oath ceremony, please?
Perfect. All right, please repeat after me. I, Nancy Kion.
I, Nancy Kion.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
My office with fidelity.
Congratulations. All right. Perfect. All right.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Want to get a couple? You're required to give a very lengthy speech.
Oh, no.
Picture? I did, thankfully.
Thanks for thinking about that. I will be there. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right, while they're doing that, next up for council consideration, we'd like authorization and a vote to hire Carmine DiMaria as a substitute crossing guard with an oath ceremony as well. But first, if we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Hauck, a second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And now we can move on with the ceremony. Chief, it's all you.
Okay, our second substitute crossing guard, Carmine Sunny DiMaria, 74, of Upper Murray Township, is a graduate of Bishop Kendrick High School, attended Westchester University. I guess it was a college back then. Mr. DiMaria is a U.S. Army veteran and a medic, reaching rank of sergeant and serving numerous capacities in the region. He was a deputy sheriff for the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, as well as a deputy Montgomery County coroner. And so we hope that you don't have to do any of those duties while being a crossing guard for us. But thank you. If you could please head up to the podium, we can get sworn in.
As they get ready for the oath, I just want to say thank you to those who will be willing to be a crossing guard. Our kids are kept safe, and I see Mr. Puzio here and others who take care of our kids going to school, and we really appreciate it. I know there've been a number of speeding cars, and we appreciate your keeping our kids safe.
All right, repeat after me. I, Carmine DiMaria.
I, Carmen DiMaria.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Looking forward to seeing you all out there.
It's also the best tie anyone's worn in our office ever.
You'll like that.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations again. You know, this is just one of many things that I think I've been reflecting on lately about how special Bridgeport is. It really is an honor and a privilege to live here in such a great community. Unfortunately, this weekend, we got some really sad news on a Saturday, that we had a really bad fire. As always, our fantastic staff and teammates here, Chief Beretta called me early in the morning, and I'm sure others, to kind of inform us of what was happening. As everyone had seen online, I'm sure, about 100 individuals and residents from Bridgeport were displaced as a result of this pretty bad fire. Thankfully, only about six people were hospitalized and two a bit more critical. But even them, as I understand it from Mr. Truman this morning, this afternoon, are in good spirits and kind of on the better side of health today, which I'm happy to hear and really excited to hear. You know, when Saturday arrived and we came down to the borough, I was just very, I'm always very struck, not surprised, but just really honored to serve alongside people and residents and live with neighbors that care so much about the borough. There were so many residents here that had been here since 2:00 a.m., including Oscar Gamble and Nikisha Johnson, that really had no business being here. They don't work here, they don't get paid here, but they woke up and they got out of their beds and came down to help other people from Bridgeport. And I think that is such a great feeling to be a part of a community with neighbors and friends like this that, you know, go out of their way for everyone else. We had countless individuals from all of the council here coming in throughout this week to make sure that the Red Cross was able to provide their services and food. We have, you know, anyone from Steve Wanzick to Ken, to, you know, the chiefs, the fire department, I think did a fantastic job bringing everything together. And what I was shocked by is when I got here around 6:00 a.m., everything was almost done. In a couple of hours, our staff was able to, you know, bring over 100 residents to the borough, feed them, make sure that their needs were met. We had volunteers like Heather Cosenza that made sure people had socks and called me and said, "Go get socks." So I literally woke up and ran to Target and got boxes of socks because we have people that care. And the word that comes to mind about that day is details. Although, you know, the entire thing as a whole was taken care of very swiftly and everything was taken care of, it wasn't without details. It wasn't without knowing who had a dog and who had a cat and whether they went to the right place and whether there was dog food provided for animals and whether kids had toys when they needed them. It was really in the details. I was really shocked to see even in the notes, you know, we were able to identify one of the residents that had some dementia issues that we were able to house properly and kind of get some help for there because Oscar Gamble wrote notes in his list saying that she could not remember her phone number, that then ticked off another series of events. So, you know, it brings tears to my eyes. I think it's something that I was really sad to see happen in Bridgeport and really sorry to see, but really, you know, fortunate that we have the staff that we do and the teammates that we do and the council and mayor that we do that really took care of the borough as they say they do. And we're continuing to do that. This is not over. We are definitely in the process of rehoming everyone for the next two weeks and then beyond for the more serious apartments. Look for more updates online as Mr. Truman always keeps us up to date and Chief as well with his updates. So I just want to thank everyone for being here for that day, all the fire departments, all of the EMT that came and spent their time here in helping us in Bridgeport, the county, the Red Cross, and the Salvation Army. I'm sure I missed some people and I'm sorry for that, but really just wanted to thank everyone for their efforts on that day and their continuous efforts in this process. Another item I wanted to bring to everyone today is I wanted to wish everyone a Black, a Happy Black History Month, share some thoughts about it in my family. It's a really fun month for us. We spend a lot of time learning and dancing and watching movies and kind of getting ourselves up to, you know, just enjoying the month as is. And, you know, one thing that we really try to do is learn. I think I try to spend some time with my kids learning. My husband takes it very seriously. Music is always blasting, but I try to bring a little bit of education to the process. And something that we found that I thought was really, really cool is the father of black aviation is from Bridgeport. The first black man in America to gain his license in the United States is from Bridgeport, Pennsylvania. He was born the son of Janie and Iverson Anderson from Bridgeport, Pennsylvania. Young Anderson was really excited about airplanes and flying from the age of six. Most flight instructors at the time would not take black students, so he taught himself to fly. At 22, he rounded up his family members and his friends, and he had some savings, and he bought an old plane. He earned his private pilot's license at 1922, no, I'm sorry, 1929, for a commercial, and for a commercial in 1932. He has countless achievements, obviously, as a result of this, but during the next two years, Anderson made several historic long-distance flights accompanying with his friend, Dr. Albert Forsyth, I think. Together, they made the first round trip, transcontinental flight by black pilots from Atlantic City, New Jersey, to Los Angeles and back without the aid of landing lights, parachutes, radios, or line-flying instruments. And now from someone that uses their GPS for everything, they used a map in the air. Absolutely wild and really, really impressive. Yeah, during the pair, also had some long-distance flights to Canada, the Caribbean, and plenty, plenty more. I really, you know, hope everyone takes a couple of minutes to look him up. His name is Charles Anderson, and he's from Bridgeport. So that's my contribution to that topic.
Did we name a street after him down in the Riverfront? I think we did, didn't we?
We did, yes. Anderson Drive, excuse me, Anderson Drive is named after, in the new Riverpoint development. In addition, just additional anecdote, all of the names of the streets within Riverpoint are named after war veterans that were Bridgeport natives.
Yeah, thanks for that, Kyle and Keith. That's really good to know. I didn't know that. Fantastic. So yeah, finally, I think for my update here, if you wanted to go to the next one, we started a really fun kind of part of the council. I just wanted to make sure that council is always somewhere that everyone feels safe and excited and kind of is a part of this big community. The way that I celebrate community often is by birthdays. I think they're very important and very exciting to me. But I think most importantly, the reason that I really like them is like to celebrate people that I love and care about. And I love everyone in Bridgeport and really care about everyone here. So happy birthday. These are our February birthdays. Happy birthday to James Alvaro and Samantha Burns, you know, and hope you guys had a great day and great month and continue to celebrate. I had a really exciting conversation with Father Ron this weekend where we talked all about his life and history and about Bridgeport's history. And, you know, plenty of people say that I'm too busy, but I think he's really the one that's too busy because he wrote a whole book last year and dedicating it to Bridgeport. I'd love to invite you up, Father Ron, to chat a bit more about your accomplishments and share with us what you have for us today.
Well, we got some nice presents for everybody here. I brought them down here to hand-deliver them. And Johnny, you want to take care of these presents here for me? Just sit down here and I'll tell you. I'll tell you what to do with them, okay? Don't be reading them now. But I just want to thank you for your kind invitation here. And as you know, I guess many should know, that we celebrated our 100th anniversary of our little church on the hill here, right? And beautiful time. Some of you folks were here, I guess. I think, I hope. My buddy Kyle, the only Kyle I ever met. One and only. And so the Archbishop was here and some of the police were here in attendance, and the firemen came by. And it was just a beautiful day, beautiful weather. It was in September, September, right, September?
September 15.
15. And we had about 10:15 priests there from around the area, and we signed together and we all fitted barely into the hall, I think with 550 or 600 people in the hall. And we had a caterer there, and it just was a beautiful day. And I just, the Archbishop and everybody else couldn't believe our children. And our hall was so nice and beautiful, and the church as well. And priests came to help the Archbishop and celebrate the services. So it just was a beautiful day. And the Archbishop was really moved by the fact that we had altar servers and we had children on stage performing some songs. Came from all over corners of the world. You know, we had Hispanic children, we had black children, we had Ukrainian children just came over here from Ukraine and were trying to bring their father here. And there's just, the Archbishop, he asked me, "How many languages are there?" I said, "About six or seven." And he said, "Well, what do you do?" I said, "Well, we group them together, you know, Hispanics over here, Slavics over here, and everybody, Italians and Irish in the middle." So we were all right. We did all right. We did our, we did our right. And I just was so happy. And what I did to celebrate this is by the following month, I was able to complete our book. And the book I put out describes the whole history of our church and Bridgeport. And in that book, 100 pages, beautiful, give me one of the books. One of the books, the photography is striking. I mean, on the front page, we have a picture of the sky over Bridgeport in our church, Golden Dome. Look at that. Beautiful picture. Beautiful picture there. Beautiful blue sky and Golden Dome. And in the back, I insisted that we take pictures of our children. So I remember we had a real nice picture of a fellow who's a professional, and we had 35 to 37 children in May of the past year. And they received First Communion in May. And they took a picture of all those children. They filled the church up. I know you can't see this, but I brought a couple of books for your librarian, one for you, too. And so it's just the most amazing thing that we were able to do. And inside the book, we start in 1924, when our church was founded, parish was founded. And it shows all the sites in Bridgeport where they first went. And the first site they went to, they rented the old Bonnet factory for $4 a week, $4. That's like food and drink for a whole, back in those days, you know, $4. And they rented that from some Bonnet guy, I guess. And that turned into the, our Ukrainian club 20 years later, once we built our own church. And then we did a beautiful thing because we had a Ukrainian club there. And the fellows kind of died out. That's where they went to speak Ukrainian because they couldn't speak English, you know. And we had newcomers there after the war in the '50s. But after a while, it served no purpose because there were other bars to go to, if you like. And we found out that the Elks were looking for a place. And they wanted to live in Bridgeport and do all their work and good work in Bridgeport, but they didn't have any money. And of course, we had to charge a fair, you know, retail market rate for that. I couldn't give it away. It's not mine to give. It's the people's. And we settled on a price, and we, I worked a deal with them. And I said, "Our church will lend you enough money to buy that." And I guess that's like a mortgage loan, a loan mortgage. And you have to pay us back for the mortgage, right, or the lien, or even the loan, every month for, I guess, 14, 15 years. And it was terrific for us because we had a steady income for, I think it could have been 1,500 bucks or something a month for all those months, even in the wintertime when nobody's in church to take a collection, you know. It was pretty lean on top of that hill in those days when we had snow that was S-N-O-W, because I'm from Pittsburgh. I know snow. That's not snow what we're getting here now. Somebody's shaking a flake upstairs. And so the whole idea was, we invited them back to Bridgeport, the Elks. And I understand they're doing a lot of good here in Bridgeport. And every time I see those Elks, they want to give me a big kiss and hug. And I said, "Man, no, you need, let's shake hands on it." I had COVID twice this year. Last thing I need is more kissing, kiss, kissing COVIDs. And so I had, and the book goes on with pictures of all your friends and neighbors from the '20s and '30s and '40s, the old priests who served here, the day we established that cross between the rectory and the church, and the day the bishop came to bless the cemetery out there on Church Road, and the day that I had to bury a priest from this town called Father Joseph Martinuk, Father Joe Martinuk, he came here and for his burial, that was in his will. And then the day we had a young fellow from our parish become a priest, and we had a big celebration. We even put some of their parish families, if they wanted, we put their picture in a book. And just the beautiful things in here. And there's a picture of the first group of Ukrainians who came here. And they would not come without their muskets. That's what they had back in 1910s, I guess. And so I have a picture, they're all standing with their muskets. They didn't care about their wives, you know, girlfriends or kids. Man, they hold these muskets like, man, you, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't wrench that, those guns. I guess they broke the laws in town back then. You couldn't have muskets, I don't know. But you'll see them here, and there's pictures of the very, all the founders are named here. There's 30 men who came, and they gave a dollar a week to their church to build that church. And I have a list of those 30 men in Bridgeport. And you probably recognize some of their names. Every picture is captioned, so you'll know who the folks are. And Joe, just a beautiful thing. And let me, let me see, how many books we had? I brought four in here. You better check what they're sitting on back there. People stole my book and
Do you have more up at the church, Father Ron?
Yes, I do. What I want you to do is just tell me how many books you would like to, if the people really want a book, just let me know. I'll bring them down to you.
Thank you. Can people purchase them, or are you like for donation, or do you have a, like a purchase price or somewhere we can locate them? Me?
No, I'll get you a book.
Okay.
I have some. I ordered 600 books, and I think I get 500.
Yeah, what a wonderful effort to preserve. Thank you so much. This is
Beautiful thing in the history of these people, and it's the history of Bridgeport.
Yes.
Thank you, Father Ron. We spoke on Friday because I wanted to, hi, Father Ron, me, Councilman Heil. Just wanted to extend that we've been supporting your church through all the crisis in Ukraine since the very beginning. Many of us have been there multiple times at multiple events you've had. And just so you and your church and community know, with everything else going on around that issue, we still very much support those families, and we're here for you.
Thank you very much. Now, on Sunday, Sunday next, we're close to the third anniversary of the war. And of course, some people don't know who started the war, so I can assume you all know who started the war, right? It wasn't Ukraine. I can guarantee you that. We're not warlike people. We're scaredy cats. And so, and so what, what we're going to do on Sunday, I'm going to have a beautiful liturgy. We're going to have it half in Ukrainian and half in English at 9:00. And at 10:00, I have this beautiful service for those who've died over there. And our people sing so beautifully. And that's going to be right the stroke of 10:00. So everybody's welcome to stop by. Usually, there's not much room in church, but we'll fit you in there, especially all you skinny people up this way here.
I've been accused of being skinny in points sometime. Is that, is that this Sunday or in two Sundays?
This coming Sunday, this coming Sunday, we have, we have to mark the third anniversary of the war. We can't go by, let it go by, you know, because it's a terrible thing, terrible thing. And so we're just hoping and praying you'll meet all of our Ukrainian people. We're going to sing in English, and then we're going to sing in Ukrainian. So now, the other thing I want to tell you, 15, 17 years ago, you guys aren't old enough. Remember, you a teenager? Wait. No, you're a teenager. So we had a crisis here in Bridgeport, and they closed all the churches in about nine months to a year. And when they closed all the churches, this crisis was all over the Catholic Church, Concha Hockin and the city, all over. And you know why they closed the churches? Because of the abuse of children. And when the three, we had three churches here were closed, Irish, Italian, and Slovak. Irish, Italian, Slovak. And when they were told to leave within the next 10 days to a week, they couldn't believe it. The Italian priest had like six months to retire. He was in his 70s. And he said, "Father, I don't have a place to go." So he came to see me, and we all met, those three priests and myself. And they told me, they were crying. These adult priests who gave 50 years to a church are crying. They got thrown out. But they said, "I couldn't get thrown out because there are no more Ukrainian priests available to come here. I'm the last man standing, last man standing." So what happened, they pleaded with me. They said, "Father Ronnie, you know the bishops and you know everybody. You've been around the longest. I'm the longest-serving priest in the whole state." They said, "Can you do something?" And so I thought and thought and thought. And I took a lot of data from them. And I took data from the internet and data from other priests I know around the country to find out what's going on. And I gathered this data together. And I looked at all this data. It took me six months to a year, you know, how many children were abused, how many priests did the abusing, how much money was spent on this by dioceses. It's all in the public, public sector. And so I, in honor of those priests who were tossed out of town for no good reason, because they were the good ones. Bad ones were caught, they ran away, they're hiding. There's still a couple of priests out there on the lam. One's in Florida, runs a chicken farm. If you ever eat chickens, I guess chickens all, you got that flu now, you ain't leaving nothing. But, and so I put together a book with all that data, but I tried to save myself from further suits so I didn't mention too many names. I'm not that dumb, you know. But I hinted strongly where this town was and what its name started with and stuff. And so if you want to find out what happened to this town, this shock, this crisis, catastrophe, Italian church is gone, they loved the church, people still walk by the Italian church and cry. Do you imagine? Walk right by, tear coming down. Porqué? See? And I, I just can't accept all this. So what I did, I put out a book that describes, and I called the book, "By a Bishop for a Day." In other words, what I would have done. Because I've got nothing to lose, I'm not afraid of my age of anybody or anything, but I would speak what I found out from these priests who were tossed. And I, I put together a book, it's only one hundred and twenty pages. And the darn book became a top seller on Amazon. I was so shocked, they start sending me money. I said, "Dang, listen, I gotta write more books." I started saying, "Every money," you know, you put it right in your bank account. Every time I went to get, you know, go to the bank, try to borrow some money from my account, they said, "You got more money here." So I was making like ten dollars a week, you know, that's something, ten dollars a week compared to my salary. I mean, it's looking good.
When we see you in a Lamborghini, we won't be surprised.
Yeah. And so here's what you want to do. You want to get on, get on Amazon, they tell you the whole story with my, I guess, synopsis of the story. And they'll tell you about us, they'll tell you about what happened, they'll tell you. There's about ten or twenty or thirty critiques on there, what I could have, should have, would have done, you know, that kind of stuff. But check it out, you'll have some fun. And if I see you someday and you want an autograph or, you guys, you guys know any, any listed author there? And I have some cards here too for you.
I'll pass it out, Father.
Pass these out, just to let you know, remember the name of the, remember the name of the, give this movie star one right there. Just to know that we're doing something about this crisis. You know, we're saying, we're speaking out. That's what my father would have done if he were around. That's what my father would have done. So check it out, tell me what you think. And if you, if you want to get a copy, I think it's nine dollars last I heard. And if you need a few dollars. You need a few dollars, you talk to my man Kyle over here, he goes, that man looking good, he sent him suits on him, that's nineteen dollar suits. Just one, you can have it. Make sure the chief gets, and it's just a memento of what we did. Because what I would have done for Bishop for a Day, I mean, I would not tolerate that for a second. Now, the last thing I want to tell you, we're doing, one, one last thing that you folks might be interested in, we reestablished our school. You know, we used to have four schools, Catholic schools in this town. Now we got one, full-time Sunday School. Not full-time, it's two hours or whatever. And I was able to put together a staff of ten people, and we now have close to ninety, ninety-five students on Sunday morning. And it's all free, it's all free. And I feed them. You, you think ninety, a hundred children could eat? Do you have any children? Oh, there you go. And I mean, these kids, they run for the donuts, chief, you can't stop them. They break in the speed limit up there. Man, they run for them donuts just to get, get them in class, you know. And we're teaching them to pray, we're teaching them to say to our Father, say to Hail Mary, we're teaching them to love each other and respect authorities, and we're teaching them all these wonderful things that nobody, nobody was left to teach them because the church is all closed. Now, it, it's just a wonderful ministry. I go there when I want to, if I'm ever down and out because, you know, somebody just died and I'm, I just go down there and I, I teach the Italian, the Hispanic women to sing Ukrainian things in Spanish, right? And the prayer they like the most, all these Spanish people, right? And they, they sing this at home, is the Ukrainian prayer, Lord Have Mercy, right? And I taught them how to sing this in Spanish. Because every time they see me, they start singing the same song in Spanish, right? And I'll tell you how it goes, go. Señor tempeada, señor tempeada, señor tempeada. Then they start again, señor, that's Lord Have Mercy.
I'll leave voice, Father Ron.
All they do is sing this song in my ear, I'm so tired of your song. And they, they can't wait till they sing, come to church and sing. It's just the most beautiful thing. They, they sing Lord Have Mercy, which is the perfect prayer, perfect prayer, Lord Have Mercy. And so it's just a beautiful thing and what we do up there. If there's any children, grandchildren, and you want them to learn about Christian faith, you want the Catholic faith, you just bring them around ten o'clock on every Sunday morning. Now, the last thing, I want to tell you, we, we have several ministries, and one ministry I'm really proud of is the AA. They have scheduled time on Wednesday night at seven o'clock, Thursday night, seven o'clock. And they come up here, and I open the doors for them, I put food out there for them, donuts again, if they're leftover from Sunday, if I have any. I rarely do, I gotta buy new ones. And these people are so tough guys. I mean, they, they are strong guys, muscle, like muscle lifters, you know. These, these people are so serious. And they want to hold me, we pray together. I mean, these people, their life depends on sobriety. And they're, they're trying so hard. And then we get some women come up there, same thing, just fine women, beautiful women, they're just serious. And they said, "Father, please, please pray for me." And when I pray with them, I'm moved, I'm moved. Because they pray, they, they pray, you know. It's like the Lord was right there, like they're talking to them. Because they know their life is in, their life is, it's, it's, it's right here.
So it seems like, Father Ron, there's some services that people can access through your church, like AA and the Sunday School.
What about them?
I said that these are some services that people can contact you. How, how would anyone contact you? Would they just come down to the church or give you a call?
Yeah. I'm the only one there usually, I have a secretary part-time, and she usually comes around. Well, she's young, you know. And so they'll find me. In fact, I've been the longest-serving priest Bridgeport ever had, you know.
Fantastic. Okay, so we will make sure that.
They know me. In fact, the kids are the worst, they want to borrow money. Kids, "Father, I need a candy bar," you know, whatever store we're in. And I don't even recognize some of those kids because they're new kids all the time. And they always want to borrow fifty cents or something. I just assume they're, they're telling me the truth there. But, you know, we're there, we have a schedule, a bulletin that's published every week.
Fantastic.
And we put the bulletin on, on church doors and everything.
Thank you so much for the time. This is fantastic. Definitely encourage everybody to purchase your books or come inquire about them. But what a great effort to spend years documenting Bridgeport's history, such, such an honor to receive and.
You know, let me know about the books, I'll get you. I know I have a couple extra.
I'll stop by and chat some more, because I'd love for you to chat through them with me too and like talk me through those stories and pictures.
Make sure you get a copy of this book.
Yes. Don't forget us when you're rich and famous.
I'll give you one for the library.
So don't forget us when you're rich and famous. You too, thank you for coming out, I really appreciate it. This is a great council meeting to have attended today, quite, quite a bit of history. Thank you, Father Ron. As we move on to more boring business and not as exciting, people are welcome to head home if you'd like to, and if you want to learn more about Bridgeport business, you're welcome to stay. So thanks for coming out if you're here and would like to leave, and if not, then we're welcome to stay too. Thanks, Father Ron, again. And Mr. Puzia for passing out the materials. All right, for council consideration, we have Resolution 2025-04, Notice of Intent to Award the 2025 Street Paving Project, 2022 CDBG Award to Innovative Construction Services for $299,645.94. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Hile, second for Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Next up for council consideration, we have a motion to direct borough manager to engage Montgomery County in discussions regarding the proposed hydraulic dam project at Pretend Riverfront Park. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Gendrum, second for Mr. Schenk. Do we have any questions or counts, questions or comments from council or the public?
So the discussion is that the borough manager is going to work with the county on, he, he's going to lead the effort, keep Mr. Truman.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Finally, up here for council consideration, raise authorization of bills and salaries for February 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion for Ms. Nolan, second from Ms. Hope. Do we have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have unfinished business. Do we have any items of unfinished business? Seeing there is none, we can move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports anyone would like to discuss? All right, moving on to the mayor's report, Mayor Dexier.
Thank you. Tonight, I want to take a moment to thank everyone who ensured the safety and well-being for those who were affected by the fire at Bridgeport Suites early Saturday morning. We're all lucky that the communication between our emergency management team and all of our incredible partners flowed so smoothly that the fire was extinguished as quickly as it was. I know I'm very grateful to all parties involved as you've made this time much easier for all, especially those who were directly impacted by the fire. From firefighters in Bridgeport to those from communities all around, to the Red Cross who helped with case management and meals, the MOCO response team who assisted in early crisis management, to the incredible property management team, our emergency response team of resident volunteers, to our borough administration and council members, and our fearless police officers led by Chief Beretta, along with so many more, mobilized quickly and efficiently to have made this process as seamless as possible. This level of teamwork saved dozens of lives and personal belongings, and the entire response should be viewed as a success and an example of what crisis management in all situations should aspire to. Thank you to all residents and beyond who have financially donated to Growing Bridgeport Together's Crisis Fund, so those impacted are able to directly receive funds that will help them during this difficult time. So if you're looking for a meaningful way to help, please consider donating via their Venmo to @growingbridgeport, PayPal to info@growingbridgeport.org, or through Facebook. You can go to growingbridgeport.org and click on Donate to immediately make a difference for your neighbors today. There are undoubtedly those who have participated in this initiative who I've not mentioned, but we also don't want to stay here all night. That's how many people were involved. And I am hoping to gather as many of these dedicated folks together at a council meeting in the near future so we can properly offer our thanks. So please stay tuned for that announcement. Yeah, and that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dexier. Next up, we have the chief's report.
Good evening, Bridgeport. There's been a lot of coverage on the Bridgeport Suites fire. Our, our, our fire chief is right here at the back of the room, Steve Wanzick. Those guys did such a fantastic job, all the fire departments, Bridgeport's Fire Department and all of the approximately fifteen fire departments and probably about another ten EMS, county EMS, fantastic job. So Steve, you know, it's excellent. We're so lucky to have the professionals that we have here. Both Steve Wanzick and Mike Kinsey are double-hatted. I don't, a lot of people don't understand that, you know, whenever Chief Wanzick is out there, you know, he's still going out to fires, fire alarms at three or four o'clock in the morning and coming in here, working, working all the other stuff that he does, both him and Mr. Kinsey, and, you know, sometimes putting on fire gear and driving a fire truck out here while they're at work. So we're lucky to have them, and I don't know what we would do without the two of them there, but thank you. Just some, just some basics from the Bridgeport Suites. There was seventy-five persons hotelled during the course of the last couple days, seventy-four additional persons that reside there that were not hotelled, that stayed with friends and family. There was over a hundred people that were evacuated on Saturday morning. Six people were injured and transported via EMS to area hospitals. Of those six people, two were, were, were critical. Of those two people that are critical, one of the patients is actually, was discharged from the hospital completely today. And one patient remains in the hospital, and it looks like that she will be removed from the critical list on Friday. So the most important thing, our lives, the people matter. And it looks like we're going to not have a fatality from this horrendous incident that's going to impact our Bridgeport community for such a long time. I want to commend Officers Noah Clemmons and Justin Broski. I received communication from Woodward Properties commending their efforts. Both of them were treated at a local hospital and released for smoke inhalation. But they, just like firefighters do, when other people run from something, we need people to run to it and help others first. And they did so, so they have my, my gratitude for, for what they did along with the firefighters on Saturday. Right now, we're, we're doing our, our food efforts, so we thank the people that have been providing food, and that'll be transferred to Mom's Meals, who have helped us many times in the past, providing additional food, stuff to our, to all of our residents that are in need. And in transitioning, we hope that in the near, in the near future, that, that we can get these people back into their homes. So thank you for everything that was done for that. Outside of that, we had a couple press releases that I released over the last week. One was a retail theft with an armed subject at the Wawa. That person was arrested and was arrested for felonies and resisting arrest and possession of unlawful firearm, but was released on unsecured bail. Another incident on the unit block of Fifth Street within the same week was an aggravated assault involving a stabbing. The patient has since been released from the hospital, and that individual did not post bail and is still in police custody, and will be having a preliminary hearing shortly at the district court across the street. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we can move on to new business. Do we have any items of new business? Seeing there's none, we can move on to open forum announcements. Are there any announcements this evening? All right, we can move on to public comment. Are there any individuals from the public that would like to comment this evening? Go ahead, you can come up to the podium, say your name and address.
All right, good evening. My name is Imran Majid. I'm at Seven Continental Way in the new townhomes, coming up on one year. So the town's really like good to us, me and my family. I work at the middle school too, so it's kind of cool seeing my students around the neighborhood. We just wanted to bring up, we've seen like negligent owners of dogs all over our community, and we've seen that it's spread to Bridgeport, so we wanted to know, like, is there anything being done? Has it been addressed? Is it known? Like, is there anything we can do? I'm not sure where the proper outlet is to discuss this, but I just wanted to bring it up, like, hey, it's happening in our town, we're seeing it all over our social pages, we're seeing it in the public ones. I didn't know if there was anything to be done about that. The other one was, we have neighbors along the train, and when I brought this up to some of the locals, they started like laughing about it because it's a train, but is there any way to limit the horn, like at the wee hours of the night or the early morning or something like that? I don't know anything about trains. I can teach you the quadratic formula, but I don't know anything about trains. But if there's anything that could be done about that, I said I'd come up here and speak for all of our neighbors, you know? And those were my two main things today.
Yeah. One thing I want to say is thank you for coming out. I think oftentimes our residents will come, will put their comments online or they'll call and things like that, and I think it takes a lot of guts to stand up here in a microphone, so I thank you for representing everyone, and I encourage everyone else to do the same if you do have any issues. So I just want to say thank you, and I'll hand it off to Mr. Truman, because I think you had some thoughts.
Thank you, President. Mr. Majid, I appreciate you coming. Let's, let's address your items one by one. The, the age-old issue of there's no bad dogs, just lousy dog owners.
We are anti-dog droppings on the sidewalk, just to be clear about our stance.
We are, yes.
Anti.
We are.
Okay.
Anti.
I think we're anti-all droppings.
Anti-dog leavings. In terms of, in terms of what is being done or what can be done, we have, we have a twice annual newsletter that goes out. There are always educational or informative articles in there that tell residents what the penalties are if they fail to comply with the picking up after your dog or mowing your lawn or failing to. or, um, mowing your lawn or failing to shovel sidewalks, all of those nuisance quality-of-life issues that you face in a, a town where folks are so densely populated next to one another. Sadly, um, there's no policing class and decency. And littering or, uh, not picking up after your dog is a crime very similar to littering, where, you know, for the, uh, police to be able to effectively write a ticket, you need somebody to witness that transpire and be able to positively ID that person. And, you know, um, we'll be frank with each other, you know? This is, it's not NYPD blue where we're gonna have a lineup and say, yes, that was the man with the Doberman. So, yeah, it's, sadly, it's a, I think it's, it's an uphill battle that every community tries facing, uh, tries to combat. I, I would say that your, your strongest resource are you folks as the residents. If you see something, say something. Try, you, try self-policing, certainly not from a, from a physical or accosting that person standpoint. But, um, if you see something, give the police a call and, and hopefully they can act quickly enough.
If there is a, if there is like a Ring camera video...
And that's, that's a good point, too.
It's not too petty to bring it up, especially if it's something to, that's habitual. If you have a video of it, send it over to the, send it over to the police chief.
That's, and that's a good, good... Mr. Schenk, you brought up a great word, petty. A lot of folks, and, and I've, I've heard this for, for years and years, decades, not just here, many other municipalities I've worked for. Folks think that there are certain items that are too petty to, that don't warrant calling 911. This, 911 is not the 911 of the, maybe the 80s or early 90s, where it's reserved for robberies and murders. Police departments are accustomed to, and, and Chief Beretta, you could please chime in here. Chief, police departments are accustomed to not only serious crimes, but also nuisance and quality-of-life calls coming in through 911 these days. You know, it's, we, we, we as municipalities try to condition folks to, our, our residents to know that you can call 911 for something that, that you might think is beneath the level of 911. That is, you know, especially after hours, that is residents' only lifeline or only line of communication oftentimes to a municipality. So, you know, that's, that's, sadly, I know it's not a great answer, but it's, it's, it's the best advice and, and, and pieces of answers I, I can provide on the dog waste issue. Transitioning over to the, uh, to the train. To answer your question, there is not anything that a municipality can do to compel a train operator to reduce or soften or eliminate the blaring of the horn as they go through town. Quite to the contrary, it is federal regulations and requirements that they must blare their horn at every at-grade crossing, every street crossing in the borough. And we sadly have three. Depending on who the train operator is, and that's a roll of the dice, we don't have... We, we have no intimate knowledge of the, those who are employed by Norfolk Southern. But depending on who you get as a train operator, sometimes they're a little more considerate and cognizant of the fact of when they're going through town. And some of them just don't seem to give a darn sometimes. And frankly, might even try, trying to start, be agitating or stirring the pot by how loud and abrasively and obnoxiously they, they, they sound their horn. You know, it's, it's, it's a coin flip. What I can tell you is that the municipality is working with the developer to explore the application to the, the FRA and, and other state transportation agencies for what's called a quiet zone designation. Quiet zone designation involves, uh, it's a multi-year application process and review process. Ultimately, the end goal is the train, Norfolk Southern would no longer blare their horns while going through town. But in exchange, additional safety measures and, and, and equipment implementations need to be installed at each of the three at-grade crossings. Excuse me. This is a significant, uh, cost and undertaking. Like I said before, it's a multi-year process. I believe we made application in, uh, in 2000, late '23, perhaps early '24. And we have not heard a peep since then from the governing bodies that, that oversee that. Uh, I can tell you that in, in Pennsylvania, there is one municipality, this side of Harrisburg, that has successfully obtained a quiet zone designation. That is, it's either Upper or Lower Makefield, over by the Delaware River, along the, the Jersey border. And I know that they've had it for several years, and they are actually abandoning, abandoning the quiet zone and going back to, uh, the traditional sounding of the horns. So there's not a lot of case study, there's not a lot of precedent. There not, aren't a lot of people that, um, with experience managing a quiet zone that we can tap as a resource. That being said, we did anticipate, despite the fact that anybody who's acquired a property in Riverpoint clearly had to cross the train tracks in order to look at those properties. So they should have been forewarned and cognizant of the fact that a train is, uh, does run through here on a consistent basis. We anticipated nuisance or complaints of this nature. And we are exploring the, uh, the proposition of a quiet zone. That being said, it's a protracted process, and, um, I have no inkling or idea of how ultimately that, that verdict's gonna fall when, when it ultimately does.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I just say one thing about that call? Get video. People generally get shamed by their, their neighbors if they're irresponsible. It's less about the police issuing a citation and more about people learning to do the right thing when someone else calls them out on it. So, uh, so if you see a neighbor, you talk to your neighbors within your, uh, within your group, your HOA. Talk about that. They probably have something in HOA bylaws about that as well for neighbors amongst neighbors. And then give us a call. We'll be glad to come out. And if we can get descriptions of things, some of our people know, um, local, we get to know who walks their dog at certain times or whatever. And we'll be glad to have a conversation with somebody. But the best thing is neighbor to neighbor first.
Any of those videos, where can they be sent? Is there an email?
You just call the police, and then we'll take a look at it. Generally, where most of the videos show up are on Bridgeport, uh, Bridgeport Facebook pages, where everyone starts saying, I know who that is. And sometimes they'll give you a, a name, or, or they'll just have a, a scary face that they'll put in the dropdowns. But, uh, you know, how effective is that? I, I don't know. You'd have to say to people to get it, to get shamed into it. But, but certainly, uh, we can possibly identify if you have any, like, brief video. And one-on-one contact in a nice way, neighborly way, say, hey, if you could, you know, your dog has to be leashed and not on my, not on my ground, and please pick up. And otherwise, we'll be glad to help you out with that.
I'll let everybody know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Really quick. That's an HOA down there, right? Is that an HOA? So there's an HOA on Second Mill that put out dog poop bags and bins. He's not listening. You can tell him later. That's all right. All right. Heather Cosenza, 126 Second Street. So I had just, I had to run out because I got phone calls. There, I know the Mom's Meal things is great, but a lot of those people don't have microwaves in their hotels. So there's no way to heat the food up. That was one. Another one, a lady has asked since Saturday for a shower chair. She has not got it. They keep saying they're gonna bring it up. I'm gonna have to call, I guess. Another thing, I'm gonna be doing a laundry soap job with, for cleaning products, laundry soap and stuff for, after they move in. Just so it's official. Junebug is gonna be holding most of the stuff. And then the Elks will hold anything that's left over. And then the Elks offer their trailer to grab whatever laundry soap and bring it down to them once they're back in there. So that's great. And I do have a list of ladies that will help the elderly clean, because that's gonna be an issue when they move back in, they're not able to do it. So, you know, that is something that hopefully you guys will help me with.
Heather. For you or chief, if there's an issue with a shower chair, let me know. And maybe there's something I can...
It's the alloy.
Just, just message me separately, and I'll see. I might know somebody that can help out with that.
Okay. Thank you so much. I think that's it.
And Heather, there are, uh, there, as far as the makeup, I know it's gonna be with, uh, the, the borough staff. But as far as the plannings, plannings go with the Woodward Properties, they're planning to do a pretty extensive job of cleaning pretty much every place that's in there that's impacted. I'm sorry.
Have you ever had a fire? No matter what they do, you're still gonna have to go in and clean it.
No, I understand that. So, but what I'm saying is that the, the property management is already engaged and been engaged about going an extra mile to do additional cleanings of all these different places. To, a whole bunches of different things that they're gonna do to probably include, uh, free use of, free use of, uh, additional laundry services, one way or the other. So that it'll give the people that normally may not wish to engage with cleaning some additional stuff, an opportunity at no or little cost to do so. So they're doing a really good job with trying to come up to speed. And, and hopefully, we have a, a few extra answers as we get clear, closer to the end of the week that might, that might provide a lot of, uh, a lot of these resources that you're talking about. It might be already compacted in there with the majority of it.
And I would say, I talked to the community cupboard today. That might be something where they have some other resources.
They do, too. They are, they are top to them.
Okay. So I talked to Angela, and I talked to a couple of other people. And they, so that's not just for this week, but long-term, keep engaging with them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Thanks for your leadership and all your help. I just want to note that Heather has been at the borough at least once a day doing something since this happened. So, yeah, thanks for all your help. And kind of tagging along with that, I know that, um, I'd like to thank Growing Bridgeport Together for their fundraiser. So, um, gathering soap and, I'm sorry, are you, would you, are you gonna announce it? John, take it away. Sorry, I didn't realize you were welcome.
Okay. No, no, no problem. Uh, so I just wanted to give a update on that. We have been receiving donations since Saturday. And we have been able to obtain 100 gift cards. And we are planning to, uh, begin distribution of those tomorrow evening at the hotels. And, uh, that's pretty much where we are at with that. Saba, back to you.
I just wanted to say thank you and notify people that this was a thing. And I didn't want it to get kind of jumbled up with the beginning speech that I had. So I just want to make sure that it was, uh, front and center. If anyone wants more information, go to Growing Bridgeport Together. And there's Venmo, PayPal, and all kinds of links. Thanks, everyone, that already donated. All right. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Just one more thing. I'm sorry, President. I should have mentioned this during, uh, during announcements. Just a reminder, March 5th, um, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM, the Red Cross, uh, coordinated by the, the Elk's Lodge, 714, is gonna be holding a blood drive here at Borough Hall. Again, that's March 5th, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. You can go on the Borough Facebook page, go under Events, and you can find out more information, how to sign up and, uh, schedule a time to, uh, to donate blood. Blood, uh, blood resources are, are, there's, there's always a, a dire need for them. So if, if you have some time, uh, we encourage you to come out and, uh, and, and give a, give a quarter or two. So, uh, thank you.
Thanks for the reminder, Mr. Truman. All right?
But we'll settle for a pint.
All right. It is 8:45. Do we have a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All right. We are adjourned. Thanks for coming out, everybody.